Call the meeting to order. If these rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome on this balmy day. Is there anybody that wanted to? Nope. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from 12:07:16? Is that moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No moves.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. Right to you. Reports of the president.
You didn't ask for conflicts of interest.
Oh, thank you, Kent, for pointing that out. Does anybody in the room or the board have any conflicts of interest that they'd like to bring forward?
No.
No. Thanks for asking them.
Hearing none. Now we'll move forward. Thank you.
Lon, how are you? Good afternoon, President Tulkey, members of the board. This afternoon, I'd like to introduce two of our programs at Southeast Tech. We have members from our media design program as well as our digital media production program. And to my left, we have Romi Klessen, Rick Workantene, Tony Conrad. This makes up the media design group. And then we've got Nick Schneider and Donovan Peterson making up our DMP program. And from there, I will let the team take over and do further introduction.
President Tulkey, members of the board, thank you for having us present today. Have a presentation to show you. Video is buffering, so I'm hoping that it's ready to go here when we get to that slide. We are MAC programs.
I was going to say, aren't you guys part of the media design technology?
Okay, so as Lon mentioned, we are two different programs, media design technology and digital media production technology. Media design actually evolved from a program that was formerly named graphic communications. And digital media productions evolved from what was called animation program. However, animation was only a part of what was covered in the program. It also includes video and motion graphics, so was renamed to digital media productions. Both programs offer two-year AAS degrees. We are currently working towards a common core to give students to have the option to cross over between the two programs, or if they start in one, to possibly move into the other if they feel it's a better fit. Current enrollment is about 60 students combined. Our faculty. May I introduce Romi Klessen first?
Hi, I'm Romi. I've been at Southeast for almost 23 years now. Before that, I had experience in the print industry and in theater and in local small retail. And I teach print media and background information relates to writing and integrating presentation into the media for both the DMP students and for media design students.
My name is Rick Workantene. I teach web design and development courses, photography and video. I have about 18 years at Southeast. It's my 18th year. Prior to coming to Southeast, I worked as a graphic designer for a local industry, working in advertising and marketing department. I worked for a local print company doing prepress and also worked for a company that did color separation and film output, and that's where I got involved with commercial Next, we have Tony Conrad.
Thanks, Rick. I'm Tony Conrad. As it says, I've been at Southeast for nine years as an instructor, but I was actually working there previously a few years back as a specialist before I became an instructor. I graduated back in 98 from Southeast Tech, went back to school and completed my bachelor's, and then was interested in graphic communication and in teaching, so really had a great opportunity to come back and do both. My field experience is working at the Argus Leader back when I was thriving, like in the days of, hate to bring it up, but like the Spencer, tornado events like that before the internet boom. Also worked at Western Commercial Printing, doing a lot of commercial design, promotional design, large layouts, things of that nature.
I'm Nick Schneider. I'm the main instructor for digital media production program. This is my 10th year at Southeast, fifth year as instructor. Previous to that, I was the lab specialist for the graphic communications program before they changed. Prior to that, I had worked in industry for about seven-plus years. I am also a graduate of Southeast in the graphic communication program. I too went on, went back to school and got my bachelor's from DSU. For the most part, my background is in graphics. Went back to school for the digital media and animation, motion graphics aspect of it. In a nutshell, just really like to help the students know what drives this kind of field, and that's why I'm where I'm at now.
Next, we'll talk about our students. Typically, our students come from small rural areas around Sioux Falls, usually within two hours' drive. We do not seem to get a big number of students from the Sioux Falls High School, the big high schools. And not to say we don't get any, we do, but most of them come from northwest Iowa, western Minnesota, and rural South Dakota areas. Most of them are looking for some way to be employed as a creative person. Not everyone has employment as their goal when they complete our program. Some want to go back home and maybe go back to the family business or to the farm or whatever it may be. Some of them, it's just a creative outlet that they enjoy. So ideally, you know, we train for employment, and that's the standard we hold everybody to, but not everybody has that objective. Most of them are here because, or come to us because they've been told that they're creative or they like the creative process. They like to draw, they like to be on the computer, they like to build websites or photography. So what they're surprised at when they come into the program is they find out how much planning is involved and how much the general ed classes apply, the math, the English, the... Just being able to do simple things like reading a ruler and convert fractions to decimals and so forth, you know, and it's not the creative side. You know, when they're building websites, it's staring at HTML code. So some of them will embrace that, others are, you know, it's not their favorite part of the program, so. We do have some adults that come to us as returning for a career change. The student that we're going to highlight, I guess, from our program that I hope you can see in the video, he is an example of somebody who worked in construction and decided that he didn't want to do that the rest of his life, so decided to come back and retrain. Craig, I think this is still muted. What is that?
It is running, but the speed of the machine, I think, is going to cause us an issue.
Do you guys want to receive it a different way, or it's not going to play on this system?
Why don't you just, I mean, send it to us, we can look at it after the meeting or, you know, tomorrow would be great.
Sure. Just to give you a quick summary of what he talks about, and unfortunately, you're not able to view it now because this was actually shot by Josh as his self-promotion video. Each student was required, as part of their portfolio, to do some kind of a promotional video piece, and so coming from the construction background, he narrates this as he's building planter boxes for flowers. He's talking about he and his wife visiting Southeast Tech after he had this aha moment while he's out doing welding on a day like today and deciding, I don't want to do this rest of my life. So he and his wife toured Southeast. They knew this is where he wanted to go to school, but didn't really know for sure what program. So we find that's common with a lot of our students. They choose Southeast Tech first because of the two-year degree and the affordability, and then while they're there, they try to find the right program. So Josh had a photography side business, so he's already a creative person, and then after touring our program, he decided that that is what he wanted to do. And the next slide is actually his success story. He's now working for carsforsale.com as a web designer, and we have about 12 students working there right now. They've hired many students over the years at carsforsale.com, very fast-growing company, and we've got students started there and grown floor, and they continue to usually add two or three each year. Josh is one of our most recent hires at carsforsale.com. The program's media design and digital media production. Students receive a solid foundation in problem-solving, technology used in media careers, and daily expectations industry. So as I mentioned before, it's not just about creating artwork, which, when you create art, it's personal, and you create what you want and you try to sell it. With media design and digital media productions, you have a client. They have very strict budget constraints. They have standards that have to be upheld as far as color schemes and font choices and all those parameters. So they find out that there's a lot of technology involved and a lot of restrictions. From the first day, they're jumping right into it with the technology, with websites. They start with HTML code, and from day one, they're working in that. Same within design classes, page layout programs, they're right into the software from the very beginning. Should mention too, I did say that we're a MAC program, and so the first thing they're done is, that's done is they're issued a MAC computer, and they go through courses to learn about the MAC operating system and how to properly care for it and maintain Another thing that's unique to our field or to our programs, we don't have any kind of an accreditation or national certification. Anybody can do design work, anybody can do photography, anybody can create design solutions. So, you know, that's kind of frustrating because unlike health fields or computer fields that have certification, you know, we don't have that. And so, as I said, we get people that come in that just want to dabble in it or they want to freelance, and to try to hold them to those same standards as those that are going out in the industry is sometimes limits us. In both majors, strong communication skills are critical, planning, time management, adhering to deadlines, and just being able to have that face-to-face communication with a client is another thing that is a hurdle for students to learn and get used to. There is a crossover with both marketing and journalism. We do have writing classes, media writing classes. We require students to maintain blogs, and we require them to present to their classmates. I'll talk a little bit about some media design career options, and then I'll turn it over to Nick to talk about his field and the career options. Graphic designer is a very common career opportunity. Nowadays, you're not only required to design, you're also required to produce the finished product. And so, back when I went to school, if you were a graphic designer, that was probably all you did, and then you handed that design over to somebody that produced it and printed it. And nowadays, you have to design it, you have to write copy, maybe build a website, maybe create some print documents, so you kind of have to wear a lot of hats. Production artists, printing specialists. So the production artist kind of takes the design work and then makes it producible. Web designer and developer, those are kind of two separate areas. Design is more the front-end look and feel, which is probably geared more towards our students, and then you have the developers, which usually have more of a computer programming type of background, being able to write backend server applications or database administration. So a lot of websites require multiple people working together. Designer and producer of signage. We have a student that works for Fox Print that does a lot of signage for Southeast. Vehicle wraps is another rapidly growing area of signage. Commercial photographer, as I mentioned when I introduced myself, I teach photography. And if you look in the, if you do a Google search nowadays for photographers in Sioux Falls, you'll find pages and pages of portrait studios. So what's hard to photograph is products and making clothing look the way it's going to be when you receive it, you know, and food to make it look appetizing. So our photography program or our photography course is geared more towards the commercial side. And video production technician or editor, and we teach students to run the camera, to shoot it, to edit it, to capture sound, put together good lighting sets. What happened with the slide? Had some student example work here, but not showing you the whole image, but we'll, we'll get that to you along with the video. But our students produce package design, they produce signage, they produce printed materials, online materials, video. So we do have a studio that we're very proud of. This slide shows, we were working on a project last semester for a promotional video, or it's actually more of a public awareness video for a program called Homefront Warriors. And so this is just a pullback of students working on the set. And this is a shared space that both programs use, digital media productions use it as well as media design. And I didn't realize until I taught as an adjunct at another school that most of these schools don't have the luxury of a studio and all the camera equipment like we do, so very glad to have that available.
All right, let me tell you a little bit about digital media production and its careers. In digital media production, the careers you can have mostly will fall in the behind-the-scenes things. You don't go into digital media production type of careers to become famous, be well-known. A lot of what we do is behind-the-scenes, the, you know, the person behind the, doing all the magic. Motion graphic designer, broadcast artist, those are students that you might see at, working at like your local KELV, KSFY, KDLT station, TV network. We have 2D and 3D animators, commercial type of things that you might see. 3D is becoming a much, much larger accessibility for most clients now, so it's more in-demand than it ever has before. Video production technicians, things, you know, that you might find for live events or, you know, commercial spots, things like that. For those that, not just being able to shoot it, but also being able to work with that, doing the video editing itself, the sound editing. We also have storyboard artists, concept artists, those people that help get someone's idea into something that's viewable, and then that gets shared on with another team that might then help produce that type of thing. We're not very, you know, like I said, people that get into this digital area aren't going to be well-recognized until, you know, maybe their big break. Usually, we work in a larger team, so it's not necessarily, you can focus on one area, you kind of have to know a lot of the different areas. So in our program, we try and train them, you know, to be as versatile as they can, so you can start in concept, and then you can start working in getting the production part done, and then getting into the final editing stages so they can do it and be proficient at it. If it works, this is a sample of leading into a student that is going to be highlighted from the digital media production program. This is some work he did in the 3D program, Maya. Let's see if it works here first.
It's called the Willows stream, man. It's like the one in Star Wars.
I can hear it.
Oh, yeah, I love that stream, dude. Doesn't it sound like, "Ah!" Ah, dude, it's more like, "Ah!" No, 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 that wasn't me. Ah! I was totally in. Ah!
Well, it sounded good. Looks like we'll have to submit that as well separately. But that leads us into our student. This is Donovan Peterson. He is a graduate of the digital media production program. He's also come back to help us out as an adjunct instructor in our 3D program.
So as Nick said, I'm Donovan Peterson. I'm actually from Grafton, North Dakota. If you guys don't know where that is, it's about 40 minutes south of the Canada border.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. That's what I, I get that a lot whenever I tell them.
So this is really warm weather.
Oh, yeah. People say it's cold out, and I'm like, this is t-shirt and shorts weather. I went into digital media production at Southeast Tech because when I was in high school, I had a kind of, I was, I loved to do video work in, or actually, when I was 17, we had a video class where the teacher didn't know anything about video. So me coming in there was kind of like a godsend tour, and I actually had ended up teaching the class for her. So I got 100%. I didn't know what I wanted to do after that, but my parents actually helped me find Southeast Tech by searching up media, or digital media in the Dakotas. And Sioux Falls was actually one of the closer ones, and I absolutely loved it. I graduated in 2014. I currently work at Kelo as a motion graphics artist, a 3D modeler, a 3D animator. The list goes on because I guess when I started there, they found out what I could do. So, and then I also worked as a 3D adjunct instructor for Southeast Tech.
Our impact on the workforce, last 10 years, been tremendous growth in online media especially, so we've had to really grow the web area. And a big part of that growth has been in the video area. So nowadays, everybody's got their mobile apps out and they're, they're doing all their surfing through mobile devices, so that's probably the biggest struggle is just keeping up with the technology. We all came from an era when it was print, and actually, when I started teaching, we had no web programs, so it was first learning to build websites, and then it was learning to make websites that fit different devices, and now it's a one-size-fits-all. And now you have to include the sound and the video and all the bells and whistles to go with it. So in the print side, it's been going from presses to digital. So a tremendous amount of growth, tremendous amount of change, you know, in photography, another example, it's all digital, so then no more film. It's everybody wants it to be ready tomorrow, so. That's where we've seen the most growth, and that's the thing that I love about it, and I think I can speak for all of us, that we're always looking for the next challenge and the next technology. You know, if I had to teach the same thing year after year that never changed, I probably would have been bored with it and left long ago, but this is what keeps us all energized. In the past, most of our grads went on to work in print media or building basic websites, as you mentioned. Nowadays, it's places like carsforsale.com, which, they've got a lot of things going, and when you hear carsforsale.com, you think, okay, it's a website where you buy a car. And actually, what they do is they build web tools for car dealerships. So a dealership gets a website and all the promotional tools, and they have many sister companies too that are high-tech, and actually, you know, if any of you are golfers, but some of our students have worked, or worked their way into their product innovation category, and so that same company, carsforsale.com, has a sister company that creates interactive putting greens, which instead of just a flat putting green, you can actually change the slopes of the course of that. And so we have students working on high-tech stuff that we haven't even seen yet, they're top secret, so it's kind of neat when those things evolve. And actually, I think there was a publication here, this is one of our students, his name is John Hoyt, and he actually did this company pretty early on, and so John is one of those working in the product innovation and with some of the top, top-secret stuff, so they did a feature for him in the Tech Times. So that concludes the presentation, and we'll open it up at this time for questions.
Do you see graphic artists from years ago? Is there, do you have many, or do you have a program where people can keep up to date with the changing times?
We do have students that come back just for refresher, and like some of them graduated long ago, maybe didn't get the web portion of our curriculum, so they come back to learn about websites. I've had people from industry come and take photography or web courses, so yes, we do have that, and as you mentioned that, I should mention too, that a lot of our competition isn't just other schools with the same programs. We have... We have people that have moved away to Chicago, Minneapolis, Omaha, bigger metro, and now they're starting families and they're coming back. So now our students are going out competing with them. We have templates. You know, you buy software and you might get a template for a website or for a newsletter. We have outsourcing to other countries like India. Argus Leader used to hire lots of our students and then they started outsourcing work to India. So we see competition in a lot of different areas that other, other types of programs don't have. That makes it a challenge.
Any other questions?
You mentioned initially that you don't see a lot of students from the Sioux Falls Public Schools and I'm just curious if there's a plan to try to recruit them or do you go and visit some of our maybe more techno, more technology classes or more kind of creative classes to try to get those students out for tours? Or is there any specific plan or action that you guys do take for that?
There is plans to reach out to all the schools, but mainly CTE Academy since they're pulling in students from lots of different area of schools. And we've all made a point to, to visit at least once a semester, even more if we can. And then also get them to come and tour our programs.
I have a comment to make about that each in the fall and in the spring, we have at least one day that's kind of like a faculty in-service day where we go out and we've been to all the Sioux Falls High Schools and also to a Gorman recently, one or more of us have. But we're hearing from a lot of students that are in the Sioux Falls area that their goal for college is just to go farther away from home to experience that growing up somewhere else. And that just seems to be an issue, particularly those who are in, interested in creative or media fields, they're looking for, you know, a wider range of input and a more dominant or dynamic culture, maybe where they're living also. I think it typically affects them in that area. You know, the majority of our students that come from really small schools are used to really small ratio between faculty and staff and stu, you know, and students. And that's one of the things they really like about us. Most of our classes have not over 20 people in them. Initially, we may have 25, but we're in the sort of 15 to 18 in a class and they really love that. It gets, all of us get the opportunity to meet all of the students. Our classrooms are all close together and we do collaborate between the two programs with the students. So by the end of the two-year period, we've become, you know, pretty close to them, but we also know what are their strengths and where, what are the areas that they need to develop in. I'm really proud of the fact that we have such good connections between people who have graduated in the past and the students that we have now. They come back and they talk to class, people drop in, you know, to tell us about their new jobs. We get pictures of their babies on Facebook, you know, the whole, but it's a, it's a really kind of a family-like situation. And that's a good fit for the students that we have that come from smaller schools because we also know that we can send them out to an internship and we can trust the people they're working with, we've known them for years. That's a good situation. And we have people on our advisory board who are former students. Half of our advisory board is probably people who graduated from the program since I've been there over the last 20 years. So that connection is really good. And we like to go out in the schools, the individual schools, when we can. But we're also working on some opportunities where we can use the new media to go visit farther afield. Last summer, I talked to some CTE teachers in other places in the state about how we might be able to use things like Skype to go out a little farther and do some distance presentations for them. So we think that's going to be a good opportunity too. I have just a brochure, I wanted to hand out a copy to you. We do, you know, in addition to producing websites, all of, a lot of promotional materials for our programs, our students produce in the layout and the print classes. And this is the one that we have about so that we can give them to, for recruiters, you know, for people to come by and visit. We always want to give them just a little taste of what, what do we do, what do we expect, and then how can they follow up further with us.
I'm curious from a perspective of over the past even decade, as I think as we have worked really hard to get technology into our K through 12 grades, when you see your students coming for either of these programs, how has their familiarity and their knowledge of technology changed as they entered the program in comparison to maybe how it was 10 years ago?
An interesting question. And, you know, I guess 10 years ago, the familiarity with Mac operating system wasn't as great as it is now. Mac was very popular in our industry, but not so much as home users. And so we see a lot of students coming in having the Mac knowledge now, but not using it as, in a professional setting. So there's still a lot of things that we can teach. There are times when students have taught me things, and it happens all the time, you know, especially with, with web or social media especially. So, yeah, it's changed a lot. And so the softwares that we have now, back when I was in the print industry, if you were going to have Photoshop, it was about a $600 or $700 application. And now you might get it with a new computer. So the experience is there, the awareness of it is there, more so now, doesn't mean they know how to use it properly. The analogy I always give is, you know, putting a garage full of tools doesn't make you a mechanic or a fancy kitchen doesn't make you a chef, you know? So they have the ability to use those tools before they get to us, but they don't always know how to use them properly. If I could add one more thing, as Romy gave you the handout, we do have a spring portfolio show, which kind of relates to the previous question about connecting with the high schools. And you'll all receive an invite to this too. Usually it's the last Thursday in April when we hold the show. We'll be holding it this year at the, what's called the hub in the new building on the campus. Prior years, we've held it down at the Museum of Visual Materials, but we want to show off the new building and what happens, we get both programs together and they show off all their best work of the two years. We have appetizers and we invite the industry professionals as well as area high schools, past graduates, and it's a pretty good show and I hope you can all attend it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. I need a motion to acknowledge the media program report.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much.
President Tholkey, members of the board, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the spring 2017 preliminary enrollment report.
President Tholkey, members of the board, thank you. We talked just real briefly about the technology changes so quickly. We bought a 3D printer, just a portable one, three years ago. We took out to, to career fairs. There's college fairs and there's career fairs. Career fairs, you kind of get to exhibit and show stuff you can't at the college fair. So three years ago, the 3D printer was brand-new. We would take it out and students would just flock to the thing, they'd never seen one before, it's wonderful. You know, we take it out now and students go, huh, yeah, we've got a couple of those in our high school now. So that's how quick it changes. So what we've been doing now is doing some 3D virtual tours of our labs on campus. If you go to our website, you'll find a few of them out there highlighted and there's more coming pretty quickly. And it's kind of neat on the website, but you put it into a set of virtual reality goggles or glasses, however you want to call them, and you can move around the campus labs using those. So hopefully that's, that's the next new thing. We can get students to campus without going to campus. But we get excited about technology and the changes and we rely on our instructors and students to keep us moving in that direction. But real, real briefly, let me get back to the reason I'm here, to talk about the enrollment spring specifically. We're kind of expecting more or less flat enrollment for spring, we're not expecting an increase. Tracy and I sat down and compared some data from last year, the first day of the semester to, to where we were basically at the end of the day yesterday or this morning, however you want to look at it. So we were about 188 students short, which seems like a large number, but that still leaves you several business days to, to register students. Obviously not ideal, but with the three days to register, we know that we'll have about, in those three days, give or take around 50 new students register. We have 39 dual-credit students to register yet. One of the questions I had from the fall was how many dual-credit students do you have? Do you expect that to grow or shrink in the spring? We're going to be about identical, about 105 to 108, which is almost exactly the same number we had. I expected slight growth, but that's, that's still not a bad number to have. We know we still have some returning students that haven't registered yet, they're waiting on financial aid, if they can still get it, based on their past performance, if it was good or in some cases, not as good as they had hoped. Then we have an unknown number of new tech high students we need to register. We do have the agreement, we let them register for classes at no charge. Obviously that doesn't help the, the budget every year, but it does, it helps us on the recruiting end with new tech students to, to get a taste of it. So will we hit that 200 or 188 student mark? Close, but honestly, I don't think we're going to get there. We'll find out final numbers by about the third week of school. At the tail end of the third week is when we're able to calculate all of them, determine who is here, who's not, and kind of go forth from there. So we have had an admission consultant come in, he's our evaluated processes, procedures, outreach. Going to find out results of that on Monday and put forth a plan. So very excited to move in that direction, but this should hopefully give you kind of a ballpark idea of where we're at for the spring semester anyway. Any questions on the spring?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none. May I have a motion to acknowledge the spring 2017 preliminary enrollment report?
Agreed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Strategic plan.
Okay, President Tholkey, members of the board, thank you. I hope my technology works a little bit better. So this is pretty simple. I do hope you guys get to see the videos and especially the animation. I will have one comment. Mr. Workin, he does say that he takes pictures that flatter you. I've yet to see proof of that, I guess, so. He says he can make you look good in your clothes and so, he likes profiles of me. He, he has a lot of those pictures though. But moving on to this, basically today, we're just going to do an overview of our teams and committee structure and how that relates to the strategic plan. We've kind of modified this a little bit and so we're providing some professional opportunities for our faculty and our staff by giving them leadership roles in the committees and teams. And then we're going to kind of cover all the things that we've changed in the structure, from simple things like making sure everyone has bylaws to doing different agendas and minutes. So we'll go through this. A little bit of nomenclature at first. We have committees and teams. And a committee is basically, you know, you're standing there, an ad hoc group that's trying to get something done for a specific purpose. It's going to be an ongoing for a lot of them, but again, we'll have a few ad hoc for just the semester or for the year. The team basically comes from the Higher Learning Commission and the idea is a team is going to be working together. And so when you see something at Southeast Tech and you see the word team at the end of it, it usually simply, basically implies that we are going to be an HLC aspect to that team. So if you see committee, it's kind of a standard committee. If you see team, think HLC. So here's a list of the majority of our committees and teams. I'm not going to go through all of them, but you can see the, the wide variety. We've had to add some different teams. This year, we did an online excellence ad hoc group. We did an ELL, ESL placement, that is new. On the team side, we have an external stakeholders, that's new as well, and that's designed to help fit the strategic plan. So the leadership opportunities that we have now worked through. Last spring, we started looking at how can we get our faculty and our staff more involved? And so one of the ideas was, and if you look at what HLC asks and through Aquip, they really want that interaction from the faculty level up. So this year, we looked at having the faculty or staff member be a chair and then we would have a co-chair, typically also a faculty member or a staff member. So there's still an administrator on every team, our committee, but we're more of an executive sponsor. So our role really is to support the team or the committee. We're not the ones leading, we're not the ones calling it, we're not the ones recruiting members for it. We are now supportive. And when you look at HLC, that is right in their aspect of what we should be doing. We have the ability for our faculty to step up, they're more involved and they have a larger say in what happens in those committees and team. It is new and I will say that it's a growing aspect for all of us. I mean, as an administrator, it's kind of hard not to just lead the committee because that's kind of what I've always done, but I think the chairs are really stepping up and doing an outstanding job. Bylaws. When you looked at our committee and team structure, we had some inconsistencies here. And so what we determined was that every committee and team should have a bylaw. And so what we did was we looked at one of our top teams and that's the curriculum committee, Vice President Jacobson runs. They have a very solid set of bylaws. So what we did was we made a generic list and then we put this out there for all committees and teams to help develop. And basically what we're doing is providing that committee and team with a purpose. I'm guessing that you've all went to a meeting and nothing's happened because you didn't have a direction. And the bylaws are one of those tools that have allowed us to make sure every committee and team has a direction. We also had the aspect where some people would be on the committee for, like forever. And you need new blood, you need people to rotate in and out. And those bylaws also help set up that rotation factor. So it's a lot of simple things that we're doing, but I think it's really going to help our structure. Then minutes in the agenda. As I told people when we implemented this, I have my doctorate, so that means I can steal things. So that's what we did. We went out there and found out what were some of the more effective minutes and agendas. And basically, we found a template that we've modified that allows us to have separate areas that you can always focus on. So there's a goals area at the top for constant, you know, reviewing of major goals, which fits perfectly with the strategic plan. There's also an area where you have assigned tasks. And again, going back to the example, we have lots of meetings, lots of great ideas and nothing happened. Well, this agenda and minute structure now requires you to assign a task, assign it to a person and give them a deadline. It's been very effective. We used it earlier in our jumpstart meetings and that's kind of what we just made it a little more robust. I've got some samples. So this is the one from our celebrating learning team. And so this year, we have to review our CLOs, which are common learning outcomes. So that's something that is our major goal for the year. We put that out there and then you provide some details. Now, this is from the very first minutes, so this doesn't have anything for the current and the last year. But every time that celebrating learning meets, this will be the first thing they see on top of their minutes and agenda, is where are we at on our common learning outcomes? And today, we had in-service and we spent four hours on this topic. So we'll be able to use that and we've got a ton of follow-up with survey information. But again, this puts the focus for the committee and the team right there. Here's our ongoing. And basically, what we've done is this will provide you, it'll get to be a very long table, but what we do is as you accomplish something, you'll gray it out. So this again is from our first committee meeting on October 6th, we elected officers. That was the agenda. We did it. The owner was all of us, we were all responsible for it and it tells you what was done. As we continue to add things to this agenda, this list will grow. But again, the key here is that owner can be assigned to a specific person, a group of people, another committee, and so then there is direction for it and then follow-up. And then in the expected outcome area, what we do is every time we discuss something, we put the date in and then we enter in those new data before us. So as we look at this as a recording process for HLC, they'll be able to see the history of how we are going through and solving these problems. So we found this to be very, very effective. So now how does this tie into strategic plan? Basically, what we were doing is while we were modifying the curriculum, or excuse me, the committee structure, we also looked at the current strategic plan that we just implemented. And we said, this is a perfect time to provide those as goals for separate committees. So we have, the main committee on campus is known as the futures team. And again, this now has a chair of a faculty member, I am the co-chair, and then President Griggs is the executive sponsor. But this is the overall committee that oversees all of the other committees and teams on campus. It provides direction, but then it's also going to make sure that we review what the other committees are done, are doing. So when you have HLC with the quality process, you need to have that review and feedback. So a little graphic here, again, no comments on the graphics, not quite as nice as they would do. But you have your futures team, which again, has the two main goals of strategic plan and they still have Higher Learning Commission with the Aquip process. And so Tracy Nohner takes, should take most responsibility for this, he did a great job on this. If you see the student success team, you see the 1.2 student experience retention. If you see the Student Success Team, you see the 1.2 Student Experience Retention. That's directly from the strategic plan. So what we've done is we've allocated each one of those items from the strategic plan to a specific committee. And then we'll have the Futures Team oversee all of those. So that's going to be on the campus side. If you go, the strategic plan is obviously much larger. So we have the Southeast Tech Council has an area of legislation and policy. Foundation Board has grants and resource campaign. And then we have 1.3, the unassigned, where basically it's going to be assigned to like four different areas. But again, the idea is to have this new structure to make sure that we implement that strategic plan in a positive format. Any questions?
Let me have him a motion to acknowledge the committee teams and the strategic plan report.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's a nice way to keep communication open and accountability too, so everyone kind of knows who's doing what and when it's you. Yep, yep. Nice job.
Opposed in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Dr. Griggs?
Good afternoon, President Tolkien and members of the board. I would like to, I have the last item and it'll be relatively short. But again, I'd like to thank the faculty for taking the time over Christmas break to prepare for the presentation here today. And I have to say, I get asked this, we did a faculty startup this week and at the first session with all faculty, had some faculty come up afterwards. And they're excited about the opportunity to come here and present in front of you. And inevitably, they ask me and say, are they serious about wanting to learn about the program? Or are they just kind of doing this kind of just as a cursory type of? And I keep telling them, once you get there, you'll find out. So anyway, thank you for the presentation. And Donovan, I know where Grafton is, so I've actually been to Grafton. So anyway, what I would like to do is just provide you with a quick update on the Southeast Tech Emergency Operations Plan. It was kind of my holiday break project. I've gone through it and we have a number of updates we're going to need to do for the plan itself. So in visiting with the admin team, we thought it'd be appropriate to bring it here to let you all know we'll be working on this and start to work more closely, I think, with, as an example, the Sioux Falls Police Department on some emergency preparedness and so forth. The plan itself, most of it's dated from 2013. And there are examples, for instance, the Hub building coming online this fall is not in the plan and so forth. So there's a number of updates that I think are very important that we begin work on. So this is more of an informational item than anything else at this time. But we need to accomplish that in this spring semester. So and then last two, I would like to, again, thank the admin team for the work that they've done. And especially Vice President Nolder and Dr. Peters in relation to the presentation they just finished. I know at times that can be a bit overwhelming, but I can assure you that that becomes critical when we have reviews, accreditation reviews, both at the program level and also with the Higher Learning Commission. And I have been in higher education a while and I have to say, I'm really impressed with the structure that they have created. And, you know, thanks to the team and the academic leadership from Vice President Jacobson and all through the group. I think they've all participated and really have taken that faculty ownership and staff, providing them that opportunity to become involved so it isn't just administration, again, presenting on these things. And I think that makes for a stronger institution, more student-centered, and more student-focused. So thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to acknowledge the report on updating the Southeast Tech Emergency Operations Plan.
Come on. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, just a second. I just want to compliment the team. On Facebook yesterday, I noticed that, I don't know if it was Tracy or Bob or who it was that was responsible, but with Globe University announcing that they're going to be closing their Sioux Falls location, I know that you guys have already begun to reach out to the students there. And that's the kind of quick action that tech schools are known for and that Southeast has done very well. So my compliments to you on getting on top of that and helping to create an opportunity for the students that have been at Globe. So just something that I'd noticed and wanted to thank you for your extra efforts. Thanks. That's all.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Any adjourn?